Welcome back to the April 1st, 2025 meeting of the HopHog Union Primary School District Board of Education. We're back from executive session. Kindly rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. One little clicker probably nine dollars. I pledge allegiance to the head of the United States of America, the republic, which sustains our nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Number four, the superintendent's update, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Borchet. Welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. See if you're okay. I do have some highlights about things to share about our students. First off, we had eight HopHog middle school students participate in the Thermo Fisher Scientific Junior Innovation Challenge. This happens yearly for us. We had a number who received recognition. Aditya Ahon and Aiden Napolitano both received mention. Ishan Mahish Kumar received third place. Pavi Hekni and Magir Satish Kumar both received first place. They've been part of the Newton-Stemms Scholar Program, which is unique to HopHogs since sixth grade, and now they will be invited to the National Junior Innovation Challenge. So congratulations to all students there. Next, the HopHog strong team raised over $16,000 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society as a part of their Student Visionaries of the Year campaign. The team worked hard to raise money, spread the word about the mission of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The team consists of Chloe Coughlin and Sophia Brown, both are captains. Braden Brown, JD Cardy, Luke Staracci, Jacob Wollman, Sophie Green, Emma Ferruno, Eva Lingan, Abigail Vazquez, and Shay Dinkley, who was a student outside of HopHog. These were all the students that helped to raise that $16,000. Exact number, $16,395.67. So thank you and congratulations to those students. Next, on Friday, March 21st, we hosted the Seventh Annual Low Island Coding Contest Junior Hackathon. The reason that we hosted is because we were the returning champs the last two years. And I am so pleased to announce that we won this again, competing against school districts from across Long Island, Nassau County districts, all throughout the Southern. We also won the award for best logo. So I think there's three prizes during the competition. The one that everyone's hoping to win is the Hackathon winner, which we've won again for three years in a row, but we also won best logo. I just really have to shout out the coaches and then I'll list the students. Our coaches are two teachers, Mr. Farrar, Ms. Thompson, both of the middle school. I posted a picture of them on Twitter and called them the goats. I mean, I left my office to go to the Hackathon. There was about 10 minutes left. We were down by five or six territories. Picture, almost like a RISPR for those of you of my generation who remember playing RISPR as a kid. You have to take territories by winning these coding battles. And our coaches set us up in such a way that the last 10 minutes, we ended up taking over a bunch of territories and winning by a considerable margin. So that's Mr. Farrar, Ms. Thompson. Students, our team captain, Ishan Mahish Kumar, eighth graders, part of the team, Nicole Dorsey, Bruce Langlos, Jake Catanen. Seventh graders Tyler Lee, Pranav Grendumar, Futury Karun, Alex Mariani, Blake Fenway, and Jackson Schwartz. So congratulations to our coding units. Lastly, I'd just like to share that this Saturday at 11:00 AM is the HYO Parade, the start of Little League season, which is always celebrated and brings a sense of excitement here in HopHog. So hopefully we have good weather for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Five B, Eliajeva, presentations, 2025-26, school budget by Bridget Siena, our assistant superintendent for business and operations, Ms. Siena. And Dr. Murphy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Borchet. Tonight, we're going to, this is our third workshop. And we keep the same traditional format. Tonight is all about what's in the budget in terms of curriculum, technology, health safety, IT, security. So big picture, since I've been in the district, particularly this board, maintaining class sizes has been a top priority. So proud to share that that will continue to be possible with this budget, along with our extensive array of programs throughout the district. Our course catalog is diverse, but balanced, particularly at the high school. We continue to be a leader when it comes to classroom technology, security as well. And of course, at the forefront of everything we do is the health and safety of our students and our staff. That's the 10,000-foot view. I'll get into the weeds here just a little bit on each of these slides. From an instructional perspective, again, just to thank the board, this remains truly unique to HopHog. There are other districts that may fund some of this, but not all that you see here. So talking about the exam fees for students. So we philosophically believe that if a student wants to step up and sit down and challenge themselves with one of the well-known assessments that are out there, the board has been behind the idea that we want to take away barriers to that possibility. So of course, that's IBAP, SAT, ACT, and PSAT. That has gradually grown to that full cadre of examinations. And we see from students every year how doing that is just such a value add and so much appreciated by our students and our parents and families. Next, as we always do, through the Curriculum and Instruction and Technology Committee, led by Dr. McCarthy, we have course offerings. Am I hearing the feedback or is that just? You guys hear the feedback?
It's the fan kicking in.
Two new courses this year, Eagle Essentials at the Middle School, Ten Read Course at History of Long Island, which we have excitement about. Those courses were vetted through the Curriculum and Instruction and Technology Committee and approved by the board earlier this year. We also have our offerings with CTE, Career Technical Education. What's that word there? We have so many students who are taking advantage of what's going on at BOSI's. I was having this conversation the other day in a high school class. Each year, I join Mr. Mike Forrest. We visit every high school senior to interview them, to get feedback and learn what we're doing well and where we can improve. It was such a tremendous conversation with this young group of students. Three of the students were pursuing HVAC. A couple others were looking into electrical work. Another was looking into plumbing. So all this happens because of the budget and our ability to support students through BOSI's. In addition to those, we have toxicology. We have animal science for those students who wish to be veterinarians. So in total, that's 72 individual students who are taking advantage of those offerings. And lastly there, with a lot of excitement, not everyone may know, but my prior life, I was an equity trader on Wall Street. We are planned and are moving forward with a trading room at the high school. We've visited some schools and some that are private schools and others that are public to learn a bit about what's worked in other districts. This is a rarity. So again, thank you to the board for supporting this vision. But really what we're looking to do is build excitement at the high school where students walk by a wall and they'll see glass. And you can picture a traditional ticker that you see on Wall Street with the stocks moving across the ticker and then trading terminals. So the idea for year one is to wrap students in different courses through the training room to have that experience. So we are really excited about that, building upon that in the years to come. Next, from PPS, led by Dr. Bilski, of course. You're seeing a lot of bullets on this slide. I'll let you read them and just kind of highlight some of them. Again, just unique to HopHog. We are a district that has had the ICT model for years. And we've brought it down into our youngest grades and into different courses at the high school. So we always provide the necessary supports there. At the bottom of that list, you're seeing that we have a new BCBA, Certified Behavior Analyst. I will say that we're able to do that because we found that we were outsourcing a lot of that work to private company and we're able to save money while bringing up individual on board. So this is a savings while it's also adding value by adding someone to our team permanently, which of course is always best for students. I added that last bullet at the last minute just to kind of highlight something that hit my superintendent thread this week. The superintendent asked, "How many Wilson certified teachers do you have in your district?" This was asked, there was about 13 superintendents on this thread. And without naming names, I will say that my answer was we were north of 50 teachers. And there's different levels there. You have level one, level two, even have teachers who can train others, which is extremely rare. So we were north of 50. A district of comparable size had chimed in that they had four. A district that is three times the size of us, maybe even larger, had 40. So again, this is not always something that the board sees or knows about, but that happens because of your support. And this is such a value add for our students. Wilson certified teacher, this is helping our students who have the most severe bleeding aids, many times students with dyslexia. So just a feather in the cap there is something that I just, when I learn what's going on in comparison, I love to share with the board and the community. Again, unique to HopHog, our college trips. The college tour that's coming up over the summer, summer 2025, includes many SUNY schools, including the Albany College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, also University of Vermont, Middlebury, Marist. Mr. Harin is beautiful, students, HopHog students who go there, Mount St. Mary. So that's on the docket. And then again, with pride, the student internship item there, just to kind of highlight what that means. We have students in our Life Skills courses who have these opportunities to have life experiences. So when I walk through the hallway of the high school, there is a coffee cart where teachers and admins can purchase a cup of coffee through an order form early in the morning. Well, that coffee cart comes to our classroom and it's our Life Skills students who are preparing the coffee, delivering it, dealing with money. So it's just this tremendous value that everybody talks about and of course benefits our students. There's also a student who recently was assigned to district office, who will come to my office and deliver mail to all members of cabinet. So and it's really such a valued addition. And what happens in those, you know, brief engagements is that the assigned assistant with the student will, you know, coach them on communication and how to address adults. You know, just these little moments that helps to build capacity in life. So tremendous job again, Dr. Bilski, who leads those efforts. Over, moving right here, of course, everybody knows about our attendance campaign. Again, we've sent out a couple of videos that have gotten some great buzz. Every day counts. I will tell you that there are districts that are looking to copy that approach. I guess there's flattery, but I'm also competitive. I don't like everyone stealing our ideas, just to be honest. But of course, the bigger picture is if our small campaign here leads to students from other districts who are chronically absent, attending school more, then God bless, that's a great thing for all students. So we're thrilled about that. Over to the right, we have our Northwell Partnership, which we've been so pleased with, offering tier-three supports to students who have those crises where they need extra help. We have additional elementary social work support coming next year. And ESS, some members of the board, Effective School Solutions, may remember a few years back, when we brought this partnership in, this program, we were wondering about, you know, how effective it was. And at the end of the school year, we had parents come to a board meeting and talking about how this made a difference in the lives of their kids. No better data than having that feedback. In technology and security, gosh, it seems like a lifetime ago that we went one-to-one. The only difference in our approach now is mostly iPads have been replaced with Chromebooks. iPads are still better suited for our youngest students in K1, who are still using their fingers more, but will continue to be one-to-one. Our smart boards are everywhere in the district. We're actually going to be coming up on a new refresh cycle there in deciding the best approach. I'm wearing audio enhancement mic. This is standardized in every HopHog classroom. Again, unique to HopHog and something that other districts are interested in. Plex boards is something new that we have. Think of a smart board in your hands, suited for small group instruction, small reading groups, a teacher that's working with a few students in the back of the room. These have taken over classrooms because it allows for almost to distill the classroom experience down to a smaller setting, but have the same opportunities for our kids. Digital dens and coding labs. Again, as former tech director here, I walked through some of these spaces. Dr. McCarthy really took the lead here. Reimagining what used to be our computer labs, the days of going in and sitting at a desktop computer behind us, the poles in the middle of the room that used to have outlets, all that stuff is gone. You walk into these spaces, they're colorful, there's lots of different opportunities. It's tremendous. Network refresh, Dr. Smolley presented earlier this year. We're going about this through a few different funding sources. The presentation from Dr. Smolley was all about the Smart Schools funds, which will be exhausted as part of this effort, multi-year effort. We continue to have, you know, our eye on monitoring the testing and making sure we have a safe environment. Moving to the right, happy to report when I walked into the high school, all students, we went seemingly overnight to one or two students wearing their ID badge to almost all students. I credit really Dr. Mike Forrest and Dr. Smolley for figuring out the best approach to ensuring buy-in there. As we know, I have kids, students don't always like to put on something that doesn't match their wardrobe. So this was not something that was, we were getting buy-in on, but we found opportunities to make it meaningful for kids. The real purpose there, of course, without getting into too much detail, is all about safety and security. When we know who's wearing a badge, we know who should be in our schools. Camera system enhancements, again, I never get into too much detail here, but that's always part of our overall vision of safety and security. And, you know, I feel like we have the best group of security guards around. Some of them are here tonight. And we have Dr. Siena, Manu Fadora, who's leading them. Again, with Dr. Smolley as well, we're always looking at additional training for them. In addition to that, happy to report that we're going to begin the process of turning over our security vehicle fleet, much overdue. Lot of money has been spent trying to keep these cars up to date. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of miles that they have grew over the years. So they'll actually, you know, we're hoping for savings by, you know, refreshing that whole fleet. I would say in year one, we're looking at two to three vehicles as part of that replacement plan. Moving over to health and safety. At the middle school, standing there, the parents got off over Lincoln. There's a need for some repair work on that curb. So that's part of the budget this upcoming year, along with the replacement playground. At Forest brought the playground for the younger students. I think it's okay to share this with some excitement. That playground replacement will happen due to a grant from Senator Martinez. The way that that works is we lay out the money, we get that back. I just really want to commend the Siena, who, I'm going to say tortured the senator's office to get, was relentless to advocate for HopHog. And that's a value of about $100,000 coming our way due to the Siena. It's a great job we did from that. Every year, we have abatments. Every slide, every presentation for the last 15 years, probably longer, has abatments. That's an old building that's plowed and tiled. And then UPK, so questions come up every year. Just to kind of rewind, going back to year one, the philosophy had always been here with the board. Our pre-K students are HopHog students. So how can we accommodate as many as possible? Happy to report for the last couple of years, the lottery has not even been necessary because we've been able to accommodate all of our youngsters. It's come at a price, which I'll explain. For the upcoming year, you see that that's growing. So we're going to have 10 sections. That's somewhere around 180 youngsters who are going to be in our buildings. The way that works is we have a few classrooms in each of our three elementary schools, and they filter in to those classrooms. As much as possible, we try to make it the home school of that family. But most important is that they're able to attend without plus the parent. Why I say that there's a financial consideration is the way that it works at the state level today is we get a certain amount of money that is allocated per student. We have no flexibility. This is not unique to HopHog. This is the way it works for the moment. And I'll explain my little pally out there. So first of all, our provider is Scope. Scope is a tremendous partner, but their costs keep rising. But the per-child allotment from the state has stayed at $5,400 a student. Scope charges $5,800. So that delta $400, multiply that by the number of students, and then you have the added cost, again, that's been supported by the board. So our parents have not been out of pocket. We've been complementing those state funds. The oddity here is that we've been leaving so much money on the table. So roughly, I'm going to say we were given $900,000 in UPK. The way the formula works, we were only able to use about $600,000 of that. I'm coming into ballpark, which correctly tomorrow. So even though we were expending an additional $128,000, we had $300,000 that we couldn't touch. It's this curve in the formula and their philosophy that we all pray. There's a lot of buzz in Albany that they're going to solve for in this budget cycle. I of course cannot make that promise, but we're all, we, every superintendent, every district, is hoping they solve this. Even the legislators I've talked to are like, "This makes no sense. We're giving you the money to spend, but you can't spend it." Like you're sending us back money, you're spending money. That's not the purpose of UPK funding and philosophy. So there's hope that they're going to raise that per-people amount or even better, get rid of it and have flexibility for districts to have some local approach to using those funds to best meet our needs. So I'm hoping for that. Lastly, for those attendants and maybe listening at home, this is just a plug. A school district strategic plan is in the works to gather feedback from all of our constituents, parents, faculty, staff, the board, all of us, to help chart the course for HopHog, you know, for the next five years. There's so much good going on. Of course, you can't drive past the high school and not see the big dirt piles. Those with the board early training, with shovels and hard hats, celebrating the beginning of that work, which will happen over the next three years. But what does it look like to reflect the values of our community? What the goals look like? What do those board goals look like in terms of my own goals and the goals of my team? So I'll be messaging the community. We're using a platform called Thought Exchange, which will help to gather feedback and elevate group thinking to best crowd source the HopHog community and understand where we go next. Okay, so with that, still part of the presidency, I'm going to hand this over to Bridget. And then what sort of questions have you, if you're ready?
Yeah, I think I can see this way. Okay. So tax levy update. The biggest update that I have for you tonight is that at the last voice equation, it was presented that we were at 377. I explained that payments of legal taxes would be working with the three municipalities. To date, I've worked with two out of the three regarding the payments of legal taxes. I'm expecting a C for '25, '26. So that number has increased, which means that the tax levy has come down from 377 to, the only graphic I have on tonight, 3.25. Don't you like that? So funding snapshot, tax levy is the largest source of revenue for HopHog schools. 3.25 is that number. State aid, so today's April 1st. Today is technically the date that the governor is supposed to have her legislative budget, her final enacted budget. We do not have that as of today. We're hoping that we receive that before and ahead of the April 22nd budget adoption. So that still remains the same. Pilots, as I said, has increased by 500,000, so that reflects that there. Everything else remains the same, so the grand total budget of 138, 393, 28, which is a budget-to-budget increase of 3.88. So 138, 393, 28 will be Proposition 1 on the ballot. And then on the backside of the ballot will be Proposition 2 regarding energy performance contract. So the district has been exploring an energy performance contract. We received several bids. We selected a company, and that company right now is undergoing a detailed engineering audit technically, which is at no cost to the school district. So Proposition 2 is asking the community to receive an additional 10% of the project funded by the state. And it's important to note in this that we don't have to have voter approval for an energy performance contract. We only need approval, or we are only seeking approval to capture the additional 10% from the state. So it's kind of small, but why would HopHog benefit? We would save over $1.14 million per year through energy savings. Those savings would then be applied into the infrastructure upgrades. So there would be no taxpayer impact. And I tried to make that as large as possible, that there is no taxpayer impact. So what does this entail? So we're looking at every aspect that could potentially save us energy. So heating, ventilation, and cooling, lighting upgrades, bringing it into today's times and today's requirements. And then something that's interesting that the company offers that most do not or others that put in for it do not is student engagement. So the project will be a learning tool for students, which is really exciting. It will allow them to learn about what it is to work for It will allow them to learn about what it is to work for an energy company. It will also have them understand how energy and sustainability is implemented and how it can improve their learning environment, which is something that we find to be very important. So again, no taxpayer impact on this, and the next step is that the detailed energy audit will continue. We should see those findings towards the end of the summer. We will present those out to the Board of Education and the community. So back to budget land, so the next important date, April 22nd, is the budget adoption. So it'll be the budget itself, but also the property tax report card, which has to be submitted to the state. After that, May 13th is the budget hearing. In between April 22nd and May 20th, the budget vote, we'll be doing the PTA roadshow, where we go to every single building, and it's always a great turnout at every single one of those. And then finally, May 20th is the annual budget vote and school election. So there will be Proposition 1 on the front side, we'll put over Proposition 2 on the backside, and that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board concerning either of the presentations, Dr. Crafton?
Yeah, it's a great idea, get the students involved in that energy contract and learning off of it. How are we actually doing this? Is it a course, or are they going to get involved?
So I actually have an energy system group here, so if you have any, I'd like to talk about that.
Okay.
Do you mind using the microphone if people want to hear you?
Yeah, hi, I'm Kate, and I'll be the project manager, who will manage the project once we get there. So it's done through multiple ways at all different levels. It's really what you guys and what we discuss, how we'll do it. Anywhere from little activities that we can send to the elementary school, some courses with high schoolers and middle schoolers. Previously, for an example, at Oceanside, we did a three-week course with the high schoolers, where we explained what EPC was, we had them actually build their own EPC project. We did a light guide, we showed them all the work that we had done. And then we also do a career kind of conversation, just so that students can see other options, and they can hear like how we got to the roles that we're in. Our hope is to also then bring in some of our contractors and other people that are involved in the project, so they can just see all the different stages and all the different types of people.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Scrito?
Dr. Murphy, as far as the great going to the high school today, are they going to put updates on the website so a lot of people call and they ask, you know, what's going on in a pile of dirt, you know, what's happening? Are we going to put updates quarterly or something?
Yeah, so on the front page of the website, there's links along the right, we pull piano keys, one of them is bond updates. So every single step along the way is added to the website there to link to its own section with all updates.
So they'll explain like, hey, tense quarter, sir, and so?
Yeah, it's actually twofolded. So it's the website, but then we send monthly updates as well to the community. So, and I think you'll see more of that once the activity even speeds up a bit. But it's already, you stop by the high school one week, and the next week is tremendously amount of momentum. Sure.
Any other questions from the board concerning the presentation? Questions or comments from the community concerning the presentation? Yes?
I have a question about Osons. It's a good program, isn't it? I think it's like two years. I haven't been to one. One line thing to that is that, once these students graduate, what is Osons going to do in that, and if they have to go to another level of vocation to do that? Or do they do internship? Or do they not?
Well, the way we're looking at this, we have these conversations every day, actually set conversation today about what does prepare, preparing our kids, right, this is the genesis even of the strategic plan is, what does preparing our kids for tomorrow look like? Because we're seeing that college is not for every student, and that number keeps increasing, right, the vocational path. So the conversations I'm having with students are so helpful because it's actually informing conversations I'm having with this group and the rest of the admin team. One of the other things that came out of the conversation with the students is, one of the boys was saying, "I know what I'm doing, but it would be great to think about a course in, let's say, ninth or 10th grade that maybe is a little bit of HVAC, a little bit of electric, a little bit of plumbing." So, you know, this is just kind of a conversation I just had, to think about what does the complete path look like? Because you want to, we do our job right, we want to kind of plant seeds that get fertilized so that kids find their passion. The second part of that is internship opportunities and career connections. We've sat me today, Dr. McCarthy, myself, Ms. Brophy, and Kelly Barry, and Mr. Whitehorse, high school principal. So that's very much part of our thinking about what does it look like after they leave us? This has been a conversation even with the board for years, like, how can we stay connected to our kids after they leave us? Because that, that may be the truest sense to know how we did, right? Where are they, three years, five years, 10 years? So it's very much, it's a great question, part of our thinking about how we complete that cycle. Yeah?
Is there a Osons fan?
Yeah.
If there's no internship, or they have to work with us, it goes up in sight. A lot of companies with stockholder difficulties, how much experience do you have?
Sure.
How do you get that? If you don't have the opportunity to try it out, a lot of you don't want to put in that time.
Sure.
But they'd rather have someone with real experience. Like I said, how do you get that?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, and definitely part of our thinking.
Experience I went through, and I don't know if you guys have seen that part of it, I know it's great that the kids go off to Osons and they're going to train, but what do you go from there? It's nice that they have that connection. I recommend our kids to try this company, even if it's minimal and okay, whatever, you're getting trained.
Well, a recent visit to a private school, again, led to a current conversation about what does a more formalized connection to HopHog alumni network look like? Which is not something that necessarily exists for public schools formally, but you do see it at St. Anthony's or some of the other schools. So we're having these conversations, it's perfect timing, we're in the same thinking space. Thank you.
And that is also what we do for our kids.
Thank you.
Are there questions, comments from the community? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Five C on the agenda is the adoption of minutes from our budget/business meeting of March 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Scrito. Michael's with the second, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Questions and comments from the community concerning tonight's agenda only? Are there any items from the consent agenda that members would like to have removed? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda in toto. Mr. Scrito seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? New business, do any board members have new business? Mr. Scrito?
I just want a couple of shout-outs. I want to thank Dr. Murphy, I had a parent call me, he's got a pothole over near the Klein's Elementary that is getting larger by the day, and it was quickly taken care of, so I want to thank you very much for the quick action.
If I may, I want to pass on my thanks to Mr. Holm, who I messaged and who got on top of that right away, so appreciate him. I appreciate you saying that, thank you.
No problem. I've got a couple of shout-outs I have to say. April 28th is a college and career fair at the HopHog High School from 6:30 to 8:30, so please mark your calendars. And here's a closer one, tomorrow night, Wednesday, 4 to 8, at the Chapultepec, there's a fundraising for the HopHog High School class of 2028, so that will uphold that class. And then Dr. Murphy, according to what's going to save money, it was approached by Smithtown Schools, and they did Mary Poppins this year, we did Mom Amida, and they have an interesting thing, I'm going to give you a copy of it, but they have their students sell ads for their programs, and I'm going to give you a copy of it, and maybe that's another way to raise some money to help our community as well as our students.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. We will definitely explore that.
Thank you. Do any other board members have new business? Does administration have any new business? Question, comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? With that, I'll take a motion for an adjournment. Our next meeting is the, is a business meeting and budget adoption, it's April 22nd, 2025. I'll make a motion for the adjournment. Mr. Scrito seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, we are adjourned. God bless HopHog and God bless the United States. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.